Good evening, everyone. I'm in call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on October 19th. It's 2023. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the good of the order, today, Councilmember Kunkel is not joining us. He's a little bit under the weather, and Councilmember Vasquez is joining us remotely. And with that, I also like to focus everyone on the land acknowledgements, where it says, "We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Messon Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe." With that, can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, as you all know on council, it's been my position for a long time that city council should not take positions as a council on things that'll come before the voters on the ballot. Excuse me. I think it's important, inappropriate for us as a body to take such positions. Our agenda tonight has Resolution 1139, which is the county taking, the city, this council, taking a position to support a tax that will be on this November ballot. While I personally support the tax and think it is absolutely necessary to provide adequate law enforcement in our community, I stand by my position that council should not take this action and as such will vote not to approve the agenda. That contains this resolution. When the agenda comes up for a vote, I will abstain from voting as I do not believe it is something we should be voting on. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? With that, all unfair of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Is there anyone opposed?
Nay.
Then that motion carries. We have approved the agenda. Next up on our approved agenda is is, yeah, is Youth Council report. Go ahead, Youth Council.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Towne, and I am the mayor of this year's Lacey Youth Council. Tonight, we're just going to be doing some brief introductions so that you'll be able to put a name to a face. I go to North Thurston High School. I'm a senior there. And this will be my third term serving on the Lacey Youth Council. Something I'm really looking forward to this year is just getting to learn more about my mayoral position as well as to hear new opinions and ideas from my fellow council members. So I'd like to pass it off to them.
Good evening, council. I am the deputy mayor this year for the Lacey Youth Council. My name is Zuri Ramirez, and I am a junior at North Thurston High School. And the thing I'm looking forward to the most are the council member Q and As, and I'm just really interested in hearing what everyone has to say and how their role affects the community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eliana Allen, and I am the clerk for this year's Lacey Youth Council. I am a junior at Pope John Paul II High School, making me the only representative of a non-public school. I'm very excited to put my passion into practice this year and to grow as a person, a leader, and to grow in my knowledge of the city.
Good evening, council. My name is Nathaniel Clay. I am a senior at Timberline High School. This is my second term serving on the Lacey Youth Council. I am the representative to the Parks Culture and Recreation Board. And one thing that I'm looking forward to this year is the Youth Council hosting their first youth summit.
Good evening, council. My name's Sophia Allard. I am a junior at Timberline High School, and I'm a representative on the library board. This year, I'm very excited to plan the Lacey Youth Summit.
Council, I'm Anthony Santiago. I'm a representative of the Historical Commission. I'm a senior at Riverhedge High School. And one thing I'm looking forward to is to be able to work with both police and veterans for community event. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Nico Hegwood. I go to Timberline High School. I'm a junior. This is my first year serving on the council. I think it'll be interesting to see how the city government interacts with the Youth Council and the other advisory boards.
Hello, my name is Samuel Tatarian. I'm the representative of the Commission on Equity. I'm from Timberline High School, and I'm a junior. The thing I'm most excited to see in, you know, being here is how the system works and its strengths and flaws.
Thank you. Is that everything? Okay. Well, thank you, Youth Council. We look forward to a great year. So next up on our approved agenda is public comment. We do have one person who signed up for public comment. Terry? Please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Hi, my name's Terry Ballard. I live in Tangawood, unincorporated Thurston County and in the urban growth area of Lacey. As far as the bill was concerned with, that the legislation that's in front of us for public, 40% goes to the city. Another 40% goes to the county legal and fire, and another 20% goes to police. The bill is, the legislation is improperly written, for one. And number two, a false report is a gross misdemeanor which carries a year in jail or, I believe it's a $5,000 fine. So if you false report like this, especially in a ballot, somebody should take that to court. But I'm poor. I can't take that to court. As far as what brought me here today, this council is discriminatory. It's discriminatory because I have the same signage problems that this council had against one of your sitting councilmen. I am appalled. Discrimination. It's low level. Yeah, it's a misdemeanor. I'm sorry. It's low level. It's $1,000, maximum of $1,000 per fine and six months in jail. The person doing it to me is up to about $40,000 and about 20 years in jail, but it continues. And you see it every day. You, up and down Martin Way, up and down Marvin Road, up and down Pacific, you see the same signs being cut. Of course, I've reported it to the Lacey. I've reported it to unincorporated Sheriff's Department. I've recorded it. Nothing gets done. You don't care. I'm not a politician. I'm not even running politics this year. I am running no party whatsoever because I don't believe in party politics, even though I am a, even though I am a public, a PCO of Tangawood, both on the Republican side and on the, now on the Democrat side. I've gotten rid of drug houses, gotten rid of halfway houses on the park, got rid of parking on one side of the street so kids can safely walk to school. But I do this because I care. And it seems that caring is going towards Commissioner District Five. And you guys could care less about me because I'm not a politician. Okay? It's very discriminatory. And where I get that? I was an equal opportunity representative trained in the United States Army, and I am appalled at the policing, and I'm appalled at this council. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is under resolutions. The first resolution is 1139 in support of the Thurston County proposition. I'll turn it over to Dave.
Thank you, Mayor, deputy mayor, council members. So Thurston County, as you know, placed Proposition 1, titled Public Safety Tax upon, or titled Sales and Use Tax for Law Enforcement Protection Corresponding Prosecution and Public Defense Services and Election Security. Thurston County placed this ballot upon the forthcoming November 7th ballot, this proposition. At this council's October 5th work session, Thurston County Commissioner Tyler Menzer, Thurston County Sheriff Derek Sanders, and Acting County Manager Robin Campbell briefed the council on the proposition and the challenges the county is facing with law enforcement and adequate staffing. As part of the discussion, a request was made to this council to consider a resolution in support of the measure. Now, state law authorizes a legislative body to express its position in support or opposition to a ballot measure provided two factors are met. The first is that notice of the meeting needs to properly include the title and number of the ballot proposition. The second condition is that members of the public are afforded an approximately equal opportunity for the expression of an opposing view. This council then, at its October 12th work session, directed my office to prepare a resolution in support of Proposition 1 for council's consideration. The city council at that work session also directed me to prepare a resolution declaring the council's intent to use any potential distribution for law enforcement purposes. So before you this evening are two resolutions, two separate resolutions for your consideration. Now, before council should consider either of these resolutions, it's important that anybody with an opposing view be offered the opportunity to express it. So I'd first ask council to ensure that that's occurred. After that's occurred, then of course council should consider these motions separately.
Is it opposing in favor and opposed? Both?
Of course, anybody that would want to speak can.
Okay. So I will open it up to the public right now. Is there anyone wishing to oppose or in favor of this proposition? Please come to the podium now.
I have a question for Dave on that. We don't need to like set a date for that or anything? I mean, like, how would the public know this was going to happen today? Because it's not any, there's been no announcement of this.
Well, it's been noticed. So this public meeting, the public was notified of this public meeting, and that notice included the necessary information.
Okay.
Anyone wishing, from the public wishing to address this council? Okay. Seeing none. Then next up is the motion in support of Thurston County Proposition 1. I move that we support Thurston County Proposition 1. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's have some discussion.
Gosh, for clarification, Mr. Mayor, my assumption is that by moving to support Proposition 1, you're moving to adopt Resolution 1139.
Yes, that's exactly right. I move that we adopt Resolution 1139 in support of Thurston County Proposition 1. And there's been a second discussion. Do you, Mayor?
I was, I was, you know, I was considering what, what Councilmember Greenstein said. And I, I, you know, in the past, there's things that we've supported that, you know, we had the Metropolitan Parks District, and we tried to, tried to get that passed. This is additional tax on residential properties for the community. But we all agreed, well, I guess I wasn't on council at that point in time, but it was agreed that we would support that, right? And I don't think any resolution that we passed would have influenced the public's decision to, I mean, they voted it down. So that's why I was asking, you know, if, if indeed our position is an influence on the public's voting, how, you know, it, it, it seems as if they still vote their conscience regardless.
Yeah, well, and, and, and I think that's a real important, I'll, I'll try to put a little finer, finer point on that. I, I've said this in the past, and Councilmember Greenstein and I have been at disagreements for as long as we've both been on council when it comes to this issue. I believe it's important for voters to know where cities stands on issues that comes before them. In this case, all this is doing is giving the voter in Lacey another piece of information when it comes to this ballot measure. Does the city of Lacey support it? Or are they, you know, are they not in favor of it? We're not convincing anyone to vote, right? All we're doing is providing an additional piece of information. At the end of the day, it's up to the voters to decide which way they're going to vote. But we're the leaders of this city. They look to us for leadership. And so I leadership. And so I, I, this idea of you're in separate, well, I, I support it personally, but as an elected official, I'm not gonna tell you which way to vote. Well, well, all we're doing is saying we support Proposition One. The voters need to vote their conscience at the end of the day with the information they're given. And that's where I think yours coming from, Deputy Mayor. It's like, we're not, all we're doing is giving the voter another piece of information when, when, when it comes time to vote. And I think it's a very important piece of information because if it was, uh, if Proposition One was something that I was against and it was detrimental to the city of Lacey, I would certainly wanna speak up on it. In this case, we've heard the facts. We, we know how Thurston County is needing more, put more sheriffs. We, we just had an update last Thursday on how we need more officers. Guess what? We have to pay for that. That doesn't just come out of thin air. And so, and there's a ballot measure before us that gives us an opportunity to pay for it. The public should know how this council feels about that. Um, and, and you're right, at the end of the day, they can take that information and either vote, vote for it or vote against it. But I, I hope they at least take where our point of view is into account when, when it comes to, uh, before they vote. So that's why I'm in favor of in supporting Thurston County Proposition One. Obviously, it's up to the voters at the end of the day, but, um, you know, I hope this council's, is in, will vote in favor of it as well. Is there any other discussion? Councilor Stevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will certainly say that residents of the, the voters here that elect us certainly tell us how they feel, especially when it comes to topics that are important to them, that they believe strongly in. Though, I, I, I support Lenny, he's been consistent on this, and, and, uh, he's been true to himself and, and his base, and that's awesome. But we, as the council too, and as individuals, we're voters as well, and we don't have very many opportunities to talk to the public. As, as you all know, we, we're constantly trying to engage the public to get them involved more and more and more. Um, if we text them, it, it sometimes irritates them. If we go doorbellin', sometimes irritates them that we're bothering them. So the, what I'm getting at is the communication between us and them is, is not always perfect. And so anytime we can engage them and let them know how we feel, they can then in return tell us whether they think we're right or wrong. You know, so it's a, it's a back and forth. It's a, um, you know, balancing act, if you will. So, but I, I do wanna say, um, Lenny has been consistent, and I, and I support him in that, and, and I understand it. I just feel me personally telling the voters that elected me to serve them as a representative, I need to communicate back with them as well.
Yeah. Councilmember Vasquez? Nothing? Any more discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And we have one abstention. Uh, the motion passes.
Mayor, can we have Councilmember Vasquez's vote, please?
Councilmember Vasquez, I, I thought you said yea, but can we get one for the, yes? Can you agree, raise your hand?
Abstained.
Uh, you abstained as well? Okay, then, uh, motion still passes. Two abstentions. Next up is resolution eleven forty related to Thurston County Proposition One and declaring intent. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so last, last work session, after discussing the previous resolution that council just considered, council also directed that I prepare a resolution declaring the council's intent to use any potential distribution for law enforcement purposes. So that's exactly what this resolution, number one-one-four-zero does, is that, um, it confirms the council's intent that any monies received, if this proposition does pass, that any monies received would be received into the city's criminal justice account and restricted for law enforcement purposes.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval of Resolution eleven forty.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanna say that, as, as we, I mean, everyone knows my position on the last one. This, I support this motion for the simple, this resolution for the simple fact that if in fact the voters do approve this new tax, I think it only appropriate that the money go to law enforcement uses, which is what this resolution does, is that it's our commitment as a city that that is where the money will go. The county's already made the commitment that that's where they're gonna put their part of the money. That's the appropriate thing to do with the money since the public is being asked for money for that purpose. So, fully in support of this.
Is there any other discussion?
I, you know, yesterday, the last time we talked about this, you were able to put a point on how those buckets of money work.
Um, do, you want to go over real quick again of, of, of what we're gonna, how we're gonna use tho- those dollars?
Yeah, just structurally how it looks, and, and I think that would be helpful to anybody listening.
The, um, if, if the proposition passes, uh, then we would look at going into twenty twenty-four with a budget amendment process that would occur sometime around March. Um, again, if the, the proposition passes, the sales tax action would not be received by the city till July. Uh, during that time, we will look at all the, um, pressures and needs of, uh, of our law enforcement programs and bring a, a package to the council to look at and, and, uh, define where those funds should be spent. The, uh, when we came to the budget workshop, we just kinda put a, a slide up on the, on the screen, just kinda say, here are the, kinda the general areas where that could be, and that included, uh, um, looking at, uh, police officer positions, funding operation and maintenance of the new police station, uh, our homeless response and mobile outreach team efforts, which are currently on reserves. So there's various things that you can look at that we wanna present to council once we have more information and where we could, uh, best utilize those money, but at the best effect for the public.
I think the big part of this is it's going into a reserve fund where the council will have, um, you know, it won't go straight into the general fund, it'll have its own reserve fund destination. And then, um, we did give some examples of, of where we believe we would spend that, spend those dollars, but it was all specifically designed for law enforcement.
And that reserve fund is very limited in scope and usage.
It is. It's, uh, it'll go into our criminal justice account, which was, is a, um, specific fund account that then, uh, in order to appropriate, we'd come back to council through the budget amendment process, and council will have that oversight.
So any other discussion? Go ahead.
I'll be supporting this one too. Um, I, I do think that the public needs to understand that we divided this into two different amendments because of some concerns that a couple of council members have. Um, but I think they need to hear from us that here's why we think it's a good thing for Lacey, that this money will be coming to the city if they approve the proposition, and here's how we'll spend it. I just don't want there to be any confusion about that, and I wholeheartedly support this bond issues.
Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have approved a les, Resolution eleven forty related to Thurston County Proposition One and declaring its intent. Next up on our, um, approved agenda is the city manager's report. First up is the interlocal agreement for Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Ryder. I want to, uh, invite Lindsay Fields, our Climate and Sustainability Coordinator. She'll be coming in, uh, remotely, and she'll provide a, um, overview of the interlocal agreement for the regional coordination and implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan.
I'm switching over, but I think you're letting me speak now, right?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I have a brief presentation about the interlocal agreement. As you, as you all know, October fourth, I believe, came to work session, talked through it more thoroughly, so I'm just gonna recap kind of what the ILA lays out, um, and then asked for a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the, um, agreement. And so, I'm gonna share my screen. Again, we're talking about the interlocal agreement for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. As you know, this last year, we've been working on a new structure for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, which includes having the jurisdictions really lead a lot of the work and kind of shape how we're gonna move into the future. Um, there's four parts of this. There's the jurisdiction implementation part, um, where jurisdictions individually implement, um, actions or policies or programs. There's the staff team. So each jurisdiction has a staff member who works on the staff team, coordinates all of the work for the jurisdictions and for the structure itself. There's the executive committee, which is comprised of elected officials from each of the jurisdictions, and they're really there to champion these ideas at their jurisdictions. And then there's the CAH, or the, um, Community Action Work Group, which provides perspective from the community, and we're working now to get that CAH in place for the end of October. Um, the scope of agreement, um, covers five different sections. So there's the Thurston Climate Mitigation, Mitigation Plan Implementation. So we're talking about, um, the actions laid out in the plan. It's time to implement those actions, which include different sectors like energy, transportation. Um, overall, I think there's about seventy-two actions called out in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. I mean, now it's our task to take those on. Um, there's the Annual Climate Mitigation Retreat, which hap, happens once a year, and I think moving forward will happen in March, where all of the, um, three bodies of the collaborative come together, have really good discussion around a regional initiative, choose, uh, we choose a regional initiative, and then we work on that neck, the next year we work on that initiative to get implemented in the jurisdictions. And then there's the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan Updates. So our next update will be in twenty twenty-four, but that's just a minor admin update, and then we'll have a bigger, broader, um, update in twenty twenty-eight. Then there's the greenhouse gas inventory. Um, so we'll be updating this every year, and then we might move to every three years. Um, it's a vital part of our plan because, as you know, we're trying to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. And then there's administrative support. So with TRPC not coming on with the next iteration of the ILA, there's a need for us to have admin support, um, which moving forward will be Institute for Sustainable Communities. Um, they're coming on board, and they'll be doing a lot of the, uh, work with the executive committee and the CAH, um, note-taking and, um, supporting those meetings, um, and things like that. And so, funding and income commitment. So per partner, it's gonna be forty-seven thousand five hundred, um, for the end of this, from now until the end of the year, so that'll be year one, and then January through December. And then we'll come back together at the end of the year and talk through next steps and funding as well. Administrative contract, I just mentioned, um, a third party, the third party will be Institute for Sustainable Communities. Um, Lacey will be leading or holding that contract and doing the admin support for that. Um, and really will just kind of be the go patrine for the, um, the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative and the staff team really, and then the EC and the CAH. And then the regional initiative, just really quick, how it gets, um, started, and so you kinda have that, um, picture. Staff team prepares options for regional initiative, which includes, um, uh, options that the EC wants to see happen, and the CAH as well, and then staff team priorities. Um, the staff team, CAH, and executive committee discuss options at that regional retreat. Um, and then we go back to the EC meeting, we ask them to approve that initiative, and then the staff team kinda gets to, gets to work developing a project plan. And then we bring it to jurisdictions to allocate resources, if there are resources to allocate, and then the staff team, um, will work to implement and develop the work product for that. Uh, and like I said, if you have questions, um, please feel free to ask them, but I'm coming to you tonight to ask for a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the necessary agreements.
Is there a motion?
That was a really quick recap.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move to authorize the city manager to sign the necessary, um, agreements to effectuate an interlocal agreement with Thurston County and the cities of Olympia and Tomwater.
Back, Cam?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
I guess I would just say, I, I, I wanna thank Lindsay and the other climate coordinators from the other jurisdictions that are participating. This is, I think, really well thought out, and, and having to make a little bit of a sea change with TRPC, um, deciding not to be our administrator on this, um, they've arrived at a good solution that makes a lot of sense. And I'm, I for one am kinda happy that the electeds now will kinda step back into more of a policymaking role and let staff really do the, the legwork on this. So it, I think it's good. So Lindsay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Are we, are we still gonna be bound by the twenty-thirty goal, or it, because I don't think we're, when you look at the trajectory of, of us actually making that, uh, it looks kinda slim to none. So, um, I, I, I appreciate that this is coming together and, and seeing it is, is really cool and everything, um, but the, the numbers don't actually support us reaching it by twenty thirty. Um, is, has there been any, any discussion about that?
I would, I would say there's a lot of discussion with the staff team about implementation. I mean, really, we're, this is a, for, probably next year, actually, because we've been working through the ILA, trying to restructure the group to something that will work and actually get projects done. Um, so next year, twenty twenty-four will be our first planning and implementation period, um, and we have a lot of work to do. I'm not, um, I, I guess I'm kind of like a glass half-full about this. I know there's a ton of work to do, um, but the staff team and the jurisdictions, I think, are gonna do everything we can possible to reach those goals regionally. Uh, globally, we don't have much say, but regionally, we do have a big say in how we're gonna reach those goals. So I'm optimistic with the next se, six years, if we really, like, hit the ground running, that we can make a big stride in reaching those goals.
I'm, I'm kinda thinking-
Hopefully that answered your question.
Uh, yeah, well, I, I guess, I'm kinda think as legislatively, in, in that, twenty, twenty-thirty is, is, is just, that's really soon to be reaching some of these super audacious goals, and is, is there, is there any latitude in that?
Well, I think whenever you have a goal like this, it's like, you know, there's only so much within our power, and it's up to, you know, our region to come together. And so I'm, I'm, you know, I, I say go for it, right? Let's, let's do everything we can to reach the goals, but that, off the end of the day, all it is is a goal. I mean, there's, like, if we don't reach it-
We're not gonna, nobody's gonna shoot us.
Yeah, you're not gonna go in the corner and, and, you know, be a timeout, Deputy Mayor.
There's no, there's no consequence like that built in, yeah.
All right. Yeah, it's a little aspirational.
No fines.
No. Is there, is there any other discussion? Then all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
Abstained.
And then, there's one abstention that motion unanimously, uh, that motion carries. Uh, next up is the contract award for the parking lot expansion.
I'd like to, like to introduce Brett Burgett, our, um, capital projects engineer, and he'll be able to present, uh, the, uh, the bid award, proposed bid award.
Good evening, uh, Honorable Counsel and Mayor. Um, I, as mentioned, I'm gonna be presenting, um, for the award of the RAC parking lot, uh, expansion. Um, I recommend that we award, uh, the, uh, contract PW twenty twenty-two dash nineteen to Miles Resources in the amount of two million nine hundred ninety thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents. Uh, the engineer's estimate for this project was four million, fifty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and five cents. We had, oh, I'm wrong. There we go. Make sure you guys actually follow along. Um, the, we had fourteen bidders for this project. Uh, there are a hundred and seventy working days, and, uh, we expect work to begin, uh, early next year. Um, some of the highlights, uh, for this project, uh, it's gonna, uh, add, uh, three hundred and forty-four parking stalls, including six electric vehicle charging stations for, or, sorry, excuse me, uh, eight ADA stalls, eight bus stalls, and the associated, um, facilities for stormwater, uh, landscaping, lighting, security cameras, and, uh, and, uh, the like. Uh, there will also be fundage improvements along Silicon Road, um, as we develop, uh, that parcel.
ADA stands for American Disabilities Act?
Correct, correct, yes. Um, for the project, uh, location, um, it's in the northwest, uh, corner of the existing park, um, at the corner of Marvin Road and Silicon. Um, currently there's a gravel lot there, and so, uh, we're gonna be actually developing it, uh, into a parking lot. Um, for the funding for this, um, there are three separate schedules, um, paid for by the arterial street funds, as well as the, uh, RAC capital, uh, fund. Um, basically you have the fundage improvements, the parking lot itself, and then the electric vehicle charging stations. Um, and this is just a very high-level, um, site plan. Um, you can kinda get an idea there of how the parking lot's gonna be laid out, um, and be happy to send you guys more details if you like it, um, afterwards. So, if you guys have any questions?
You walked along the side of the bus parking? Along the right-hand side?
Yeah, so yeah, just beneath the LS zero four, yes. Those are the bus parking stalls.
Nice. I noticed that there is one bid that was rejected. Can you explain why it was rejected?
Yeah, so the one bid that was rejected, there was a line item for one of the bid items that was unclear. It was missing a decimal as well as eligible and some other of the digits. So it was rejected.
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW twenty twenty-two dash nineteen to Low bidder Miles Resources LLC of Puyallup, Washington in the amount of two million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just say this has been a pretty long time coming. We've been talking about paving that parking area at the RAC for, I don't know, quite a few years now. So I'm glad to see the project coming to fruition.
Did you mention lighting?
Yes, there is lighting for both the frontage improvement as well as the parking itself.
My only question is, obviously, we're talking about three vehicle charging stations. We've had a difficult time here, at least at the city of Lacey, to come up with our vehicle charging stations. Is, do they think they will get them installed during this time?
So the way that we put together the specification for this project, the EV chargers are designated as long lead items. And so we have it to where they can complete all of the work except for that and then suspend the contract until they're able to acquire those. So we did take that into account, how hard it is to get those installed and procured currently. And so that's written in the contract.
It was really interesting talking to PSC. It seems like they're having to, their lead time for their chargers is not nearly as long as all the problems that we're having with ours. So I'm not sure why we're having such a difficult time trying to get our chargers. But talking to PSC didn't sound like it, you know, it should be that big of a deal. So I don't know, maybe we can reach out. They said they would actually help with that as well, so maybe we can do that. Scott?
There's funding that has to come from-
Yeah, I just want to clarify. The main issue with the timing for the chargers at City Hall is because those were federally funded. So we're not going to have that issue on this project. It isn't so much as just being able to get the chargers as the fact that it was federally funded and all the challenges and constraints that come along with that.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Is there any other, the only other thing I would say is, this is the first time I've seen a bid come way under like this in a while. So hopefully, it's the start of some, you know, some good bids in our favor for a change. We've seen inflation, everything else go through the roof and, you know, it's cost the city more just like it's cost everyone else more. But in this circumstance, I mean, this bid is considerably lower than what we thought we were going to have to pay. So I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty good news. So we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, so the, those letters are for designations of other sheets on the plan. But yes, LS O three is where the stormwater facilities are. So, yeah, they don't mean a whole lot for this slide. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to award this contract to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. And next up is our 2024 budget presentation and Rick's going to walk right up to the podium and get right to it.
Well, it's been a while since I've been at the lectern, so. Well, good evening, mayor and city council. It's a distinct pleasure and honor to be here tonight to be able to present the proposed 2024 budget and present it as a balanced budget. And as I kick off the presentation, I do want to just acknowledge and thank all the tremendous amount of work and dedication that the staff of this organization has done to put this budget together for this year. I want to recognize our finance director Troy Wu and all his work and his team in the finance department, all of the directors. They've done a great job of bringing proposals forward and conscious of the fiscal responsibilities of the city as well as all their staff and their departments, looking at what are the truly needs of the city. And even though we have, it's always a culling process, but also being supportive of that process. So I did want to thank everybody for their, all their work to put this together. The, but as, as you know, and it's today tonight, the budget, this night is one of the most important things that the city council and the organization of the city does on behalf of the public. As the budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan and operations guide, this proposed 2024 budget highlights priorities, planned investments, and measures to continue a sustainable and resilient organization and community. This budget reflects policies, goals, and priorities of this body, the city council, as well as the community, as has been informed by community engagement and surveys that have been conducted over the past several years. It also acts as a roadmap for the coming year for providing guidance for our operational decision-making. The 2024 budget includes a significant amount of continued investment in our, in critical infrastructure within the communities, utilities, street systems, parks, as well as facilities, specifically with the construction of the new police station. And this is very significant. This is a sixty-one and a half million dollar project and signifies the first expansion of city facilities since around 2008. And if you think about that and the tremendous growth we've seen, this is a key step in providing, you know, expansion of those facilities to serve the needs of the public. It is also a critical need for our police department, who have significantly outgrown that current space that they've been operating in since nineteen eighty-five. The, but also I want to just, you know, recognize too and looking forward that this is the first step into a need for a continued investment into our existing buildings or for our facilities as our, as our, will need to continue as our existing buildings age and the organization grows and outgrows these facilities in responding to the growing community needs. The city is still facing impacts and challenges of the rapidly growing and expanding community. And we've seen that over the last several years, as I'll talk about a little bit more later in my presentation. And as we know, as development occurs, infrastructure expands and population grows. That puts more pressure on the organization to try and keep pace and maintain a level of services, programs, and staff resources to serve those growing demands. All this with the limited amount of revenue growth and capacity to raise, raise funds. Now, looking back, it's been a few years in our rearview mirror, but you add in a global pandemic and this subsequent labor disruption that that caused. I would like to say, you know, the city has done a very good job over the past several years of being very resilient in responding to those changes and those unknown circumstances or unforeseen circumstances. But also too, as we get that in our rearview mirror, we still have challenges facing us when we look forward. With a looming inflationary environment that's causing climbing interest rates that affect both public and private investment. We have an inconsistent supply chain, as we just kind of just talked about, with trying to lead times with charging and other type of building supplies. And then there's also the challenges of recruiting and retaining staff. You know, that's all kind of the puzzle we're going to be trying to tackle as a, as a community, as an organization, as we look forward. But in response to these pressures and uncertainties, it is imperative for the city to maintain sound financial practices, continue to deliver core services at the current levels, and focus on key council and community priorities. This budget, that I will summarize tonight, does so and reflects those policies and priorities established by the council. And before I get into, into the, I just lost my notes. Into this budget summary, I do want to take a few minutes to tie, look at the community in a snapshot and some of the past trends we've seen over the last ten years. So. All right, I just lost my screen. So I'm going to have to look at the screen up here. Give me one second, I'll give it one more chance here. Once I try to get my screen back, this is just kind of a glance at our community. The, of course, the city of Lacey has grown and evolved to a community of just under sixty thousand people. And if you've been here around this community for a long time, you know, it's, it's definitely has grown and changed. And a lot of that for the better, we're granting more diversity, we're, you know, really enrich the community and the community members. And out of that, well, that growth we've seen over the last many years, we also have quite a bit of housing that we are now providing. Total units is just under twenty-five thousand total housing units in the community. Of those, fifty-four percent are owner occupied and about forty-six percent are renter occupied. So a fairly good mix of housing opportunities. Also, you know, as we've seen, we've seen skyrocketing prices in housing that could continue. As of this past year, our median home price for sale is about five hundred and five thousand, has dropped a little bit in the recent environment of interest rates increase. But currently, we're at about five hundred and five thousand of a median house price. The, and then of course, the average rent, which is also reflecting a lot of multifamily being constructed over the last several years. Our average rent for an eight hundred and forty-five square foot apartment is, has climbed up to about seventeen hundred dollars a month, which is quite, quite a big, big increase in rent. But as we try to, you know, look at other parts of our community, we have a pretty strong economy and foundation in our business. We have about fourteen, just over fourteen hundred businesses in the city of Lacey. And those businesses provide enough jobs to employ just over twenty-three thousand employees. We also have had, seen a lot of development over the past twenty, twenty-five years in commercial and industrial, specifically in the industrial sector. So we now have just over fifteen million square feet of commercial and industrial space. Our vacancy rates within those areas have gone up and down over the last ten years. But currently, countywide, we see a commercial vacancy rate of just around ten percent, industrial in the four percent factor, and retail in five percent, and then multifamily at five point two percent. And that five point two percent, I just want to point out in watching the market, when we switch from a predominant single-family home production in the community to multifamily, that multi-family vacancy rate has dropped down to the two percent, which is a very, very low percentage number and which kind of would drive that rapid growth of multifamily units and then also that kind of contributes to the overall rise in rental costs. So looking back over the last just ten years, and then we've seen significant growth in the community. And this is kind of the pressures that the organization has been looking at and responding to. Just over the last ten years, we've had a population increase of just over fourteen thousand people. And to put that a little bit about our perspective, the city of Yellam population in twenty twenty-two is just over ten thousand people. So just this growth alone in population would be about the fourth largest community in the county. We added on about another four thousand housing units over the past ten years as well as nine point eight million square feet in commercial and industrial. And I do want to point out this, that number a little bit because in terms of commercial and industrial, most of that development is in our industrial large footprint in our distribution categories. We have not seen any significant commercial expansion since about two thousand eight, the two thousand eight recession, which that reset our retail footprint significantly. So we don't see the large expansion of retail, commercial, if we once did. So that is a sector that's still been slowing. It's something we still need to focus on in how we develop more retail opportunities. And then, of course, over this last ten years, we've had several annexations that totaled to about another fifteen hundred acres added to the jurisdiction of the city of Lacey and bringing with that just over twenty-eight hundred individuals. During this time, I wanted to point out also too, what's that affects on, hit on the organization and trying to keep pace. And the best way to look at it is, over the last several budget cycles, the positions that were created. And so, and over the past roughly ten years, we've added eighty-eight new employees to the city of Lacey to try to meet that growth. And I believe it's over the last six years that we actually added sixty-six additional employees. And one of the challenges that creates is now, not only the community expanded quite rapidly, but the organization itself is as well. And, and with that, it's not just maintaining the same services and programs. We've actually added new programs that, during that time as well, that we haven't historically done. Programs such as, as we just heard tonight, climate action coordination, regional housing coordination type issues, homeless response, the, and, you know, stormwater compliance, which in that utility, we tried to create a new utility and meet the state requirements for inspections, which caused an employee increase. So again, when we look at the total number of employees increased over that time, it's not just to maintain the existing programs, it's also in response to adding on new programs as well. So, but with all that said, we're still looking forward and we still have quite a few private development projects that are in the mix that, that we have, we'll see coming online or in the pipeline. And of course, this is also dependent on how, you know, getting any delays in terms of financing and those type of things. But out in the northeast area, we are excited about the new tech equipment site coming online. They are looking to open in November and have a formal grand opening this next spring. And tech equipment is Volvo Mack Truck dealership. And they also have repairs and parts sales out of that location. They will also have more retail pads that will be closer to Willamette. So we'll see that as potential future expansion of our commercial or retail footprint.
This will be the first time we've had a automotive dealership come to Lacey in a long time, right?
Yes. You know, we haven't had a new, new vehicles dealership since, I believe, Car Pros had left the Lacey Boulevard Pacific Avenue area. Also, coming on the ground and open up, and if you have not been there, it's a nice little place to be. There's our twenty-three kitchens, well, it's actually Hoboken Bay Town Center, but one of their anchor tenants is Twenty-three Kitchens, which is a restaurant and pickleball entertainment-type facility. And there seem to be a lot of activity and league play starting to play out there with the indoor and outdoor courts. And also, we have other about seventy thousand square feet of total retail square footage. But also, the real exciting thing about this project is the next phase, which is going to be the residential portion, another three hundred and fifty units, more urban-style, work-lives style, a mixture of units, work-lives style, townhouse, and apartments in a central courtyard. Again, it's starting to establish that more urban-style form and development that's been anticipated and planned for, for quite some time out in the Hawks Prairie Business District area.
Hey, Rick.
Yes?
Is that, is that the pad next to Twenty-three Kitchens or the pad that's closer to the foreground?
The Twenty-three Kitchens is on the right side of the drawing with the grass and you can kind of see this, Rick, goes for the pickleball courts.
So right here?
Where will the new, where will the new housing be?
It'll be in the foreground, in the dirt. And then we're, well, yeah, on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the footprints in the internal courtyard parking lots.
That's going to be awesome.
I just got my screen back, so I'll see if I can get- I just got my screen back, so let's see if I can get caught up here. Also, out in the northeast area off of Britton Parkway, next, next to Providence Medical Center, is plans for a Marriott hotel to expand some of our hospitality. We haven't had new hotel development for quite some time, so we're, we'd be excited for that. And that will also help support, again, our lodging tax dollars, and it'll help support tourism in the area through that potential revenue growth.
When do we think that will come online?
The, they've received land use approval, and they need to start going into the civil construction drawing phase, as well as building permit application, we haven't received those yet.
Is that, is that gonna be a residence inn, or?
I, I'm not sure what level Marriott, but I can find that out.
Okay, thank you.
So switching to the midtown area, we've seen a lot of, you know, activity and growth and investment in the midtown area. And we've talked about this for some time, but this is the Seventh Avenue Apartments. That's currently moving forward with some off-site infrastructure improvements. If you notice that Seventh Avenue, they've been doing some sewer system upgrades. Plans are to potentially break ground on this sometime late this twenty-twenty-four. Again, this is going to be another three-hundred-and-fifty units, multi-story, it's going to start forming the district and creating that streetscape along Seventh Avenue. And again, starting to, well, this and several other investments in this area, they're, they'll be coming forward as well. Yeah.
Will they be taking us up on any of our offers to, for below-market, maybe some tax exemptions, or are we, have we made it that far yet?
They, they will be looking at the multifamily tax exemption program. It's, the midtown area is the only place that's, that's authorized by council. They more than likely will look at the eight-year market rate, not the twelve-year low-income portion. They don't, there's not a restriction to require one or the others, at the developer's choice. For Sixth Avenue place that they just recently developed with the Pints and Courts Doghouse, that's been a multifamily tax exemption project that's for market rate. Where that process works, they'll make application, go through, make sure it qualifies, and then come to council for, you know, the final approval. Also, whoops. So also around the Huntermore Park, on the opposite side of Huntermore Park, there's a vacant office building that is also going to be, applications come in to start looking at converting that to residential as well. Support about fifty apartment units, and it'd be right across the street from Huntermore Park. And then, finally, the two, the south building that's right adjacent to the park, where you, on the other side of the Seventh Avenue Hub Residential, they're also going to be renovating that office building, repurposing it for office space, but also activate the lower piece that directly faces the park into a restaurant. So you're starting to see a lot of the investment in around Midtown starting to occur. That this was planned for, you know, twenty-some years ago, due to the Downtown Two Thousand Plan that was done in the late nineties, eventually Woodland District Strategic Plan, but now you're starting seeing that long-term planning investments, or policy set starting to be paid off in investments, which will help, again, infill parking lots and get more value into the city. Also, we have the off-campus emergency departments being developed by Multi-Care at the corner of Golf Club and Pacific. They are almost complete, and they're looking at potentially opening that up with the ribbon cutting sometime in December. So with that, switching from commercial to some of the building permit activity, again, this is what you can see over the last eight years or so, in terms of single, or single-family home permits in the lower darker portion of the bar, and the multifamily in the blue. In twenty-twenty-three, we have to date, year-to-date, issued permits for sixty-one multifamily units and eighty-eight single-family homes. We had a few Platts come in off of Fifteenth Avenue that has raised our activity for single-family development permits. In the pipeline, for the next two or three or four years, we'll still see some consistent development with another two-hundred-and-ninety-one single-family lots that we should come online, as well as about eighteen hundred multifamily units. So I, I just wanted to illustrate that a little bit to kind of set the stage for the... Yes? Councilman Vasquez?
I don't want to look, look.
You're breaking up pretty good. You're breaking up pretty good, we got none of that. How many condos?
There, currently, I, there, I don't, I'm not aware of any condos being proposed at this time, in those eighteen hundred units. I know we have two condo projects up on Meridian Campus that are just finishing out and building out and coming online. To my knowledge, that's the only condo project activity that I'm aware of at this point.
I guess, my, I have one question. We're seeing a bunch of private investment in, in our midtown, and it's something that's very exciting. We've been looking for private investment in our midtown, as you said, for, you know, twenty years. This council has talked about putting public investment to meet some of that private investment. Does this budget include, your proposed budget include some, some public investment in that area? We've talked about looking at Huntermore Park and maybe doing a splash park in that area, and doing some other public improvements to make it more attractive area for the public to come to. I'm just curious if your budget has those?
It does, it, as council has a set aside, assigned reserves for strategic investments in the economic development vein. And there's, we're gonna have a, those, those, those funds are going to be utilized to create some more investments within the midtown area. A couple of projects you'll see coming forward to council for review and authorize would be looking at expanding the midtown branding program. We've installed the wraps and the utility boxes this past year, and we will be spanning that to the banners. We'll also be looking at doing improvements to Huntermore Park, as you mentioned. Not necessarily a splash pad, but creating some type of interactive water feature, a hardscape plaza that kind of builds off of the, all the residential that's going in there, kind of creating more of a, a, you know, urban park slash backyard type of feel. And, and then also, I'll talk about this one a little bit later, but the starting design work on a roundabout intersection at Seventh and College. And so there's some substantial investment from the city of Lacey, and the council has looked towards to try to also help facilitate some of this reinvestment by the private sector into midtown and meet that vision of the Woodland District Strategic Plan and the Downtown Two Thousand Plan. So, I wanted to kind of give a sense, though, talking about, you know, where we've been and kind of, where we kind of see we're going in terms of community growth and expansion, but really, our twenty-twenty-four budget is predicated. And, and as I get into our budget, I first want to kind of start talking about what's the, the approach that we took in preparing the budget. So, you know, this kind of outlines what we, what we focused on, and this is all, of course, based on available funding. How much, how much we have in reserve, but also, more importantly, how much are we going to have in, in projected revenues to meet some of the expanding services and staffing resources? So as we approach the budget sector, we wanted to first, you know, make sure we're in line with the council fiscal policies adopted in twenty-thirteen. And just kind of give a snippet with those kind, the tenor of those policies. They include, you know, first thing they say is incorporate the council priorities. Make sure you have adequate maintenance and replacement of city facilities and equipment. And expenditures should not exceed projected revenues, and proposed operating expenditures are supported from ongoing revenues. And this budget's coming forward, you know, after that, you know, large expansion we've had over the last three or four years, to try to get into that vein of, okay, now we need to have a stabilizing year, kind of make sure we're, we're moving forward, we're not overextending ourselves, and this budget does this. After that, then we look at, make sure we're maintaining our existing levels of service. I mean, that's very important, that we don't go backwards, that we maintain level of services, and then implement the council work priorities. And then finally, start addressing critical needs, and then if we do have capacity, expand program and services. So that's the approach that we took in preparing this budget for the council's consideration. Now, this, we mentioned the council's work plan priorities. I think the council recalls going through an exercise to set up a three-year plan, or twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-five, twenty-five. And this lays out the various categories or themes in the council priorities. And as you see those little blue boxes next to those, those topics, you'll see throughout the presentation of our projects, those boxes that identify that's a council priority being implemented in the budget. And again, this is something that's been very valuable to have as a guide moving forward, and also a benchmark for council the way of the budget. So, the twenty-twenty-four proposed total budget is coming in at just under three-hundred million dollars this, this coming year. Now, there's, there's an increase in that budget, because there's a lot of capital facility projects coming online, both in our utilities, as well as the police station, as I mentioned. Our, our general fund is increasing, as well as several other funds. But there, but that's, there's some positive there. So this is a, a chart that shows the twenty-twenty-four proposed budget to the twenty-twenty-three revised budget. So as you go down the list from top to bottom, you'll notice that our general fund has increased by almost thirteen, just over thirteen percent. And again, a lot of that has to do with some of the capital project coming on board for this coming year. You also see our capital projects increase, and again, in funding some of our, our projects, we're having to take general fund reserves to transfer over to them, so that's why you see that increase in both categories. Special revenue has a decline by thirty percent. That's primarily in our lodging tax dollars. And if council recalls, you know, last year, the, the council authorized two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of lodging tax reserves to fund for the remodel of the Washington Center, and that's what that number represents. Then we go into the debt service, and that has also gone down twenty percent. So it is good to get, buy down our debt. The, and that's primarily from paying off a voter-approved bond for parks that was issued, I think, back in twenty-twelve.
When's the last of our debt serviced, done? Twenty-twenty-six?
Twenty-twenty-six is when our la, second and last voter-approved measure is paid off. And then, of course, we've got our utility funds, we have some substantial utility improvements coming forward in twenty-twenty-four. And then our general service funds, which is the, 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 the budget fund that looks at all of our equipment and cars and vehicles. And so we're looking at a little increase in, in budget for, for twenty-twenty-four vehicle replacement and, and equipment.
I have a real quick question about our utility funds.
Yep.
Obviously, that's a substantial increase, and these things this council's been talking about for a while, and we've been made aware of, is our water meters. Like, I, I know that we had to, we came to a situation where the technology was, you know, pretty old. We were trying to upgrade it. We've since then had to hire some, you know, temporary staff to go out and read water meters. I'm just trying to remember where we're at in that process. Have we made a decision to go with the, the new technology, and, and that's what we're seeing here? Or are we, are we still like assessing what we're gonna do with our water meters and which way we're gonna go?
Yeah, it's more the second, Mr. Mayor. The, within this area, we ran into the same supply chain issues as many areas. We spent about a year without getting any meter replacements, which made the problem even worse, and we're still trying to recover from that. So, I, you know, the council authorized a number of temporary positions, two-year positions. We're probably looking at another year. I mean, we haven't got to that point yet to make that decision, but we essentially lost a year just really treading water. So as those meters failed, we used those positions to actually do manual reads. I mean, we went completely backwards in terms of technology. So really, we're still in that evaluation period and have not, we're just not ready to come back to the council for recommendation.
So, and the temp, so we're just letting the meters sort of fail at this point, and they're in some kind, come to a decision on if we're gonna get the new model or not?
Well, we're making, we're making up lost ground, but we're, you know, like I said, we lost a year. So we've been replacing mirrors, we did finally start to get the, the deliveries of those meters. We did upgrade a software system, it was really kind of a forced system, because the old one was no longer going to be supported. So we've made progress, but we certainly haven't made the progress that we thought we were going to make in that first year.
Okay, thank you.
So now I want to take a little deeper dive into the general fund. And again, just to reiterate, the general fund budget for this year is just over eighty-seven million dollars. You know, and then go into the funding sources for the general fund, it's primarily made up of sales, property, and utility tax, as well as BNO and admission and gambling. Taxes, those taxes make up forty-four percent of the funds for this year of income. The other category, thirty-nine percent, again, that's the cash transfers, some miscellaneous, and other type of fund that we'll have some more detail a little bit later in the presentation. And then, of course, permits and fees, that's where, you know, you know, construction permits, building permits, parks fees, those type of things go in to make up the permits and fees. So for, for this coming year, we're seeing a sales tax, we're projecting about seventeen million dollars in sales tax collection, property increasing a little bit to eight-point-seven million, and utility eight-point-five. So modest increases year over year. Wanted to show this chart, just to kind of get a sense of how the, the growth of sales tax has, has gone over the last ten years. And this is, these numbers are based on projected sales tax in the previous budget documents. And as you can see, it's just kind of been a slowly increase. The, but then you have that big dip in twenty-twenty, and I get, again, these are budget projection numbers. I just wanted to highlight this, because that's, again, a good testament to this organization and the council, that in twenty-twenty, when the pandemic hit, nobody knew what that, what effect that was going to have with everything shutting down. So that's where we pivoted, did some exercises to figure out what do we need to do to adjust our revenue projections? How do we, you know, delay projects and try to get our, you know, make sure that we weren't substantially impacted by the potential financial impacts of the pandemic? Fortunately, what we found out through that pandemic was, you know, with increased population growth, the trans, transition to online purchasing, and also the, and stores considered to be essential were able to stay open in Lacey, and that was key, because you think about the stores, you know, grocery stores being essential, and most of our grocery stores, you know, they kind of pivoted away from a single use to the Targets, Walmarts, and, and Fred Meyers that could stay open as essential services, and so people still get other goods and services as well. That all happened despite the lack of retail expansion that we haven't seen since two thousand eight. But again, I want to caution looking forward that at some point, this is going to plateau if we don't have more commercial expansion, because as population starts to decline, then, then those numbers may decline as well. And then just the graphic how sales tax is collected. Again, our current, in the city of Lacey, the sales tax distribution is, or sales tax collection is at nine-point-five percent. This is, this chart just illustrates that the city of Lacey actually collects less than one percent of that total nine-point-five percent, or, in other words, eighty-five cents on the dollar. And in this graphic, you see that the state collects six-and-a-half cents, there's two cents in local option sales tax, and fifteen cents that go to Thurston County. And this chart just goes a little more detail of how our nine, how we get to our nine-point-five percent, and it compares it to also the city of Olympia and Ton Water. And I think that just the important thing to point out is, there's, there's a, with the local option sales tax, authorized local governments to collect up to one percent. However, for cities, fifteen-tenths is, is, goes to the county, and the cities collect point-eight-five percent. And then, as you put on the local options with Interstate Transit, the Jefferson Bis, Bis, the various home funds, you can see how that, that chart lays out that all the jurisdictions are at nine-point-five percent, but they get there in a little different ways. So switching to property tax, this is our projection for property tax going into twenty-twenty-four. Property tax is going to increase about two, just over two percent, to about eight-point-seven million dollars. That's about a two, just over a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar increase from previous year. And again, it's important to point out, as you see this chart, as it, this slowly goes, property tax is limited to a one-percent increase, with the exception for new assessed value that comes on the roll. And so this, for twenty-twenty-four, represents our one-point, one-percent increase if the council exercises that option, as well as the... as well as, uh, the, um, new assessed value that's come from construction in the previous year. So, you always work at property tax levies and, um, levy rates. And that's always the, comes down to the bottom line. And I wanted to show this chart is just a good illustration. You know, as the, uh, the top of the green shade goes up, that's the increase in assessed valuation in the city of Lacey community. So, for, um, uh, 2024, we're looking at about a $12 billion assessed valuation, which is about a, almost just, just under a half-billion-dollar decrease from the previous year. A lot of that has to do with how the market has, has, has recalibrated over the last past year. But you see the substantial growth in that assessed valuation, especially in 2022, 2023. And that's indicative of all the, uh, large industrial facilities that's come online. But as the, as that assessment goes up, usually the levy rate goes down. And when it, when the assessed value goes down, the levy rate goes up. And the reason is, is we're allowed to collect, uh, a maximum, uh, levy. And this year, it's gonna be the eight-point, uh, um, eight-point-seven million dollars. And then that is spread out amongst all the assessed value, and that's what gets to your levy rate of point-seven-two. And this is always the, the challenge of trying to explain how, how the property tax, uh, rate is, is, is collected. So this is just a chart that kind of walks through that. These numbers are actual city of Lacey numbers for 2024. We tried to set it up so it could be easy to follow. But again, in step one, if the, um, the, the levy for the current year or previous year is seven-point-nine, uh, million dollars, uh, shown in step one in the center of the slide, you exercise the one percent. You add that one percent to the total levy of, you know, to create an eight, uh, million dollars. And you can see in between that step is the one percent equals seventy-nine million and some change. So you create a levy rate of eight million dollars. Then you, um, take that and divide it by the assessed value that's divided by a thousand to get your levy rate. And that's what gets down to the, uh, the point-six-six-seven in this, uh, diagram. The, um, for, for 2024, or one, if, if the council exercised the one percent provision, that will add about just, just around eighty-four thousand dollars to our levy. And, uh, which is always critical to keep up as best we can with inflation and cost. So, again, this is a slide that shows the, uh, major, uh, fund sources for the, uh, general fund. And again, as you look down, their sales tax is our, our most predominant, uh, uh, source, followed by our service fees, then property tax, and our utility tax, and then BNO tax. And again, down at the bottom is that other revenue that, that was represented in that pie chart previously as thirty-nine percent. And again, that, uh, represents, uh, our transfers, uh, in and out of the fund, uh, miscellaneous and other taxes and, and reserves. So, that is the, the funding source for our general fund. So this, now going on to expenditures. So this is the, uh, all the departments within the city of Lacey from public works, police, admin support services, which is basically the city managers, uh, human resources, and public affairs office, as well as our, uh, parks and cultural recreation, community economic development, and our common facilities and social services, or human services. The, um, um, and you can see each one of those categories, you know, sixteen million for, uh, you know, public works and expenditures, down to, uh, seventeen million for police. This is all out of the, out of the general fund. And of course, you can see the kind of the employee, employee, uh, numbers within each one of those, uh, departments. And again, this makes up our total expenditures of about eighty-seven million, just over eighty-seven million dollars. So, just a kind of quick snapshot of what goes into some of these funds. This is the, the cost of parks, culture and recreation, what makes up that total number. So you have, uh, you know, numbers that relate to parks maintenance and all other parks. And again, as we add on facilities, as we, uh, expand, those numbers will continue to go up because we'll need to add staff resources to support that. You have, uh, Rainier Vista oper- operations, the regional athletic complex operations, uh, aquatics, and our parks and recreation programs. Next, uh, this is the amount of general fund dollars that go into maintaining our streets. Total is about four-point-seven million dollars. And you can see the breakdown over to the right of the column, uh, what goes into sidewalk maintenance, signs, markings, street lighting, roadside, uh, roadside maintenance, as well as, uh, general street department activities. One of the things I want to clarify, and this is one of the things that council took action, uh, several years ago, was to establish the transportation benefit district as a vote of the public to add a two-tenths of one, uh, one percent onto, uh, the city of Lacey's sales tax collection. That's been instrumental in maintaining our streets because in addition to the four-point-seven million dollars of general fund, we also have the TBD fund, which totals, I think, around five-and-a-half million dollars to also help support with our pavement management programs and some sidewalk maintenance repairs, or sidewalk maintenance as well. So again, leveraging local authority to post taxes and general fund dollars has been able to make our, our general fund dollars go further.
Actually, I have a quick question. And it's for, uh, going last slide for the parks and recreation. We spend a little over three million on parks and recreation. But we also charge fees, and we also do, um, other things to bring in, in dollars. How much does that offset that three million? So we spend about three million. How much do we get in, in park fees and other things to help offset that three million?
Yeah, so, uh, so we cover, our commitment is to cover all the direct costs. Um, and so that's, you know, any, um, part-time staff and supplies and professional services to run those programs. So, um, I want to say our revenues were at eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, um, for general programs. And then there's also the revenue that's gener- generated by the facility rentals and the park shelter rentals. So on a, a good year, it's about one-point-two million dollars that come in.
Great.
And that's, uh, like a pre-COVID type of a year.
Pre-COVID type of year. So we're, we're still to run our parks and rec programs. We're still at least, oh, not quite two-million-dollar deficit, but it's, it's up there.
Subsidized.
Yeah, okay.
On that same topic, are we getting close to our pre-COVID numbers again? Are we getting back pretty close to that?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And trying to just add on to the, the fees, you know, to me, economic development, you have your, your land use and permitting fees too. And those don't cover full costs. And those are some of the things that we may have to take another look at in, in the distant future in terms of, uh, what are we, where are we at on our cost recovery for those services and how do we balance that? So, streets, and then, uh, the cost of, you know, public safety. And, and here's a, you know, we would think of public safety, we, you know, that's one of the, one of the, the several priorities we have as a community to, to our citizens, our community members. And, um, the, uh, and you look at the total cost, we have our, just our police department services is, is just under seventeen million. But total cost is nineteen million, because you gotta add in the, uh, the court services, jail services, as well as the prosecution. And so with that, as you can see, that's, uh, one of our bigger, bigger expenditures in terms of the general fund, and exceeds our sales tax revenue and takes a portion of our property tax if you took it in, in buckets like that. Just, again, as we look at that, that's why it's very important that we try to find these other revenues services to continue to expand and, and be able to, or serve, expand these community. So again, going back to the general fund breakdown, um, and the expenditure, in the expenditures, you can see most of those expenditures are in our most valuable asset, our, our staff in our organization. They're the ones that are on the ground, they're the ones interacting with the public and our community members, and, uh, and trying to meet their needs with the highest quality possible that they can do. So, again, sixty-seven percent of the, the fund expenditures is in salaries and, and benefits. So next, I wanted to get into, in the budget, our workforce enhancements. Now, again, as we looked at our revenues and our, and our expenditures, we aren't able to add a lot of enhancements in the general fund capacity. So we're looking at just a couple of positions. But we looked at those positions as, as positions that had either funding that came, you know, with it, or were supported by ongoing, uh, revenues. The first position I would like to highlight, and this is something the council's been, you know, anticipating with the conversations over the past year, is a communications manager being placed in public affairs. Now, this, uh, position would be a supervisor of the public, uh, fair staff. They'll be overseeing our television production and governmental services, uh, and our communication plans. And, you know, this will be a transition from, uh, the TC Media, which the contract would be expiring at the end of this year. As we had the conversations, I, the council was very clear about, you know, wanting to continue to support TC Media services, but it's a, it's funded through a partnership of all the local jurisdictions. The other local jurisdictions are stepping away. So we need to be prepared to take those provisions in house. We were able to add this position because we were able to support it with, uh, uh, some of the funding that we were, had in that contract, um, for TC Media, so about a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. And, um, and then also, uh, using, um, pay fees and reserves to also purchase the capital equipment that we will need to, um, you know, set up our system to broadcast the future council meetings. And one other item of note, because this transition will be, uh, occurring in January, that if this is something that, uh, the council is, um, you know, supportive of and given some early indications, we're gonna need to start preparing for transition so that we don't have an interruption of service that, once the contract expires at the end of December. So we want to be able to start doing some early recruitment and, uh, and, uh, setting up for that eventual transition.
So, if, if the council got that right, this is our proposed 2024 budget. So, we're not funding this position until next year. However, on January first, we have to bring everything in, in-house.
Yep.
And so, it's, it's my recommendation that, um, we, even though this is not until January first, that we actually, you know, authorize our city manager to start the process now. So we have people in place, and we may not even get that person in place by January first. Because you know how long it takes to, to find people. But I, I don't think we can wait till January first and then try to put this all on John and say, hey, John, you figure it out until we actually get people in place to actually do it, right? And so it, it's my recommendation that we, we authorize the city manager to actually start looking for the communications manager right now in preparation for January first. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Is that a motion?
That's, that's my motion.
I don't, I don't know if we need a, a motion, but what we, just make you aware that we will start doing some groundwork, but we might not fill the position till January, but we need to start planning that process and get it set so we don't have.
Well, you'll, you'll need a motion for us to, um, to do a budget amendment. So are you gonna do that after the fact, or what, Troy?
I don't believe we'll need an amendment. I think we have capacities in the budget, so I don't think we need an official motion, as the city manager said. So, but general consensus to move ahead, we'll, we'll do exactly that.
Sixty-two days.
It only makes sense. I mean, I appreciate you having January first be day one, but we obviously need this person in place before then. Because on day one, on January first, we need them to start producing.
As well as some equipment before then, right?
And the equipment, right? Where are we doing for equipment?
And I'm gonna have to kick it over to Shannon, and she'll be able to fill in on the strategy.
If I could, um, well, good evening, council. So just, uh, I guess a little bit of updates. So we are looking currently at some of the capital equipment purchases. And that is kind of our primary goal right now, is to make sure that we have that in place around January first, as close as possible as we possibly can. Um, and so we are finalizing, um, some decisions on what we want to do and move forward with equipment purchases. I think, like the city manager, um, you know, highlighted with the process of, you know, getting started with the anticipation that we could hopefully bring somebody on very early on in 2024. I do think it is feasible that we would have a stopgap approach. But it is something that we would certainly want to have somebody available, uh, on the communication staff as soon as possible. But I do think we do have the resources, um, the, uh, resiliency and the reserve to figure out a way to do it for a short period of time, but we'd like to get moving as soon as possible.
So is there a possibility on January first, we don't have enough equipment to do a live broadcast for, of our council meeting?
I think you need to, uh, maybe just a, a little distinction there with the live broadcast. We would certainly be able to stream, and it would look very similar to how we're streaming right now. However, the difference would be cable casting. And so we would need some additional technology to cable cast. And so we are going to try to final, finalize those orders as soon as possible and get that equipment installed. So it'd be a difference of, could somebody access it via the internet, or could somebody access it via cable?
Okay. So we should be able to, um, Facebook and our YouTube channel should be, should be good to go. We're just not quite yet to get it onto, on cable unless some equipment comes in.
And, correct. And that's, again, certainly something we're looking to try to get that infrastructure in place as soon as possible.
If, if we're, if we're not cable casting on January one, are we, are we, we're not out of compliance?
There, there is no, um, requirement that the city cable cast.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I think you've gotten our, our, our direction. We obviously appreciate, uh, staffs, you know, trying to piece that together in the meantime. But I, I think we need to have that, um, that person, um, there as, as soon as we can, so, um.
I, I would say that for someone that was prepared to have, vote for Lacey to fund all of TC Media, regardless of who's in it and who's not, that we should definitely support this. I mean, it's sooner rather than later.
Thank you. And thank you, Shannon. So our next, uh, you know, program enhancement is in our, uh, police department and the safe and secure community priorities for the council. And, uh, in there, we have, uh, two new positions, well, one position and, and a, a backfill. We are funding a digital forensic investigator. And this will be an individual, it'll be a, a, uh, non-commission, uh, employee that will, uh, be able to, um, go in and, uh, uh, access phones and laptop and electronics to pull evidence and information off of those for, uh, investigation purposes. And then also be able to testify in court proceedings, uh, to that evidence. And what this will do is use the, the chief's, uh, expression, is the force multiplier. Because currently, our detectives are having to do that, and they may not have all those skills. So it takes time, takes them away from other work that they can be doing, and then also the time it takes to testify in court on those, those issues. So this is something that will free up capacity for the detectives to do, uh, more of that investigative work that they're, they're trained to do. We'll also add a, a police officer position. But when I say add, um, as, uh, we've talked about the challenges of recruitment and the timeframe it takes to train, uh, somebody hired to be a commissioned officer on the street by going through the, uh, state academy process. One of the things that we, that, uh, the chief and the, and the police department have done successfully is have, uh, Lacey police staff stationed up there as, as instructors. And when they're positioned up there as instructors, then the, um, criminal justice training commission, uh, will fund that position. So if they're funding that position, we're gonna backfill and fund an additional position so we don't lose a, a body out of our department. So that will be a position that will be, uh, making sure that we can maintain the status quo. Uh, we'll also provide some funding in there to provide, uh, two more members of our, uh, our department to participate in crisis, uh, negotiation and the regional SWAT team. And then another thing that we, um, identified as too, is trying to make sure we can keep, uh, officers healthy, uh, and, uh, through a wellness program that's, uh, tailored for law enforcement, uh, personnel called Signa Tactical Wellness. And so that's another program we're gonna try, you know, we're gonna onboard this coming year to provide as a benefit to our, our, uh, law enforcement personnel.
Before we go any further, um, obviously, this council this, tonight, uh, took action saying if the public safety tax were to pass, um, you know, give them some direction of, of how we would, we'd spend those dollars. Given that, the, the lead time, we know on how long it takes to get police officers, uh, through the system, my, my recommendation would be, you know, before the, end of the year, if, if we know that, that, um, that public safety, um, has passed, that this council, um, start the process of, of looking to, um, adding some more police officers. You know, this calendar year, at least give some direction this calendar year, even though, um, it's gonna take a little bit of while to have them online. And so, um, I'm not sure what that process looks like. But obviously, um, we should know by, by mid-November that, the outcome of that. And, um, I would say, uh, at that point, the council should, you know, get right on, um, looking at, you know, what we do with those dollars.
If, if I can make a suggestion, um, because, you know, that's the next, you know, points, you know, minimized from the rest of the, the bullets up on the screen. But pinning that proposition one, that the idea would be, once it passed, then we'll start working on what are those, all those various needs that we have and how we can utilize a fund to develop a list of options for council to take a look at. And we are looking at scheduling a retreat at the end of January to talk about this, uh, financial strategy. And this is one of those pieces that we can focus on in January, start setting the stage for that budget amendment in, in March, and timing on how we start moving this forward to make sure that, one, we're not acting too quickly. Where we might be, uh, but we have a more deliberate approach of how we're gonna be able to use those funds for the most critical need.
And so we can bring that to a work session, uh, once this vote is completed.
With, with the city manager's suggestions, we wait to our, our, um, our retreat, I.
Because one of the reasons that I would like to do that is, is so we can also make sure that we're, um, able to put all the information together. able to put all the information together for the council, and I think maybe Troy could probably add some other commentary to this.
Sure, I would add that in terms of cash flow and when we would expect that tax, we wouldn't see any of that, those tax dollars until mid-year.
Sure. Oh, I I understand. I'm just I'm just saying, I also know how long it takes for the lead time.
Yep.
And um and it, you know, I think it's worth worth at least a discussion at some point. I'm not sure if I'm even comfortable waiting. I'll wait till the retreat to have discussion of of at least maybe the thought of getting started on on hiring a couple more police officers.
It's it's a it's it's a very good point, and and it is a challenge, that lead time, and and, you know, some of the efforts that the the police department instilled and chiefs instilled is is recruitment, trying to get laterals, but also too, we currently have open positions that we still need to fill. And so there's there's two two hills we need to climb, fill in our existing positions, and then see what we need to expand to meet service demands as well. And we need to put together some strategy of how we accomplish that.
Fair enough.
Next, I'm gonna jump into our utility um utility uh funds, uh starting with uh wastewater. Uh so we're, you know, as again, as we have development occur, our wastewater system is expanding, and we're going to need to add on some additional employee resources. Uh one of those is a um a SCADA Control Specialist, and um it's SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. And um and it's basically our our telemetry and tech and uh electronic systems to monitor flows of uh our utilities and and making sure pumps are running on time and and we're monitoring that activity. And as we increase our system, we need to add more support in that effort. And again, when we look at these uh positions in our utilities, these are also predicted in our our utility plans and in our rate studies as we uh you know, move forward over the the next six years. Also, um we're going to look at adding an engineer technician three. This is another position that's going to provide more capacity for some of our senior level, because they'll be able to um inventory, respond to questions and inquiries, and provide engineering skills for supporting those infrastructure and the and the folks out in the field. We also have a two uh journey level technicians, uh they're gonna be set as positions, but they're gonna have a zero value next to them for twenty twenty-four. And we need to put a place for our positions in for these two, because we need to, which I talked about later, we need to order a new va- a second vector truck uh to maintain our um ability to to service our sewer lines. Vector trucks have a long lead time, I found out, that uh you know, it takes sometimes a, you know, uh over a year and a half to uh to come out, you know, be delivered, because they have to be custom-built. So when that truck is delivered, we need to make sure we're planning for those two positions to be able to operate that truck to come online as well in twenty twenty-five. Next, in the water utility. In the in the water utility, uh we are, with our capital projects for this year, we're gonna add two additional treatment wells. We currently have one. And so we're adding uh uh a total, a total of three treatment facilities. Uh so with that, we're gonna need to add on a a senior water treatment technician to be able to help support. Now we have, we'll have two positions to support the three facilities. And then again, just very similar in um in um uh the wastewater utility, we also need to add a engineering techni- technician three in our stormwater utility to again, be able to do engineering design work and 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 provide information. And then uh finally, for our added positions in uh for the city, we're also going to add a uh SCADA technician. And uh this particular in position will be housed in our INET, our Information Services Department with uh providing tech support, but be designated for our water and uh sewer utilities to provide them technical support on operating the electronics associated with the SCADA system. We're starting to see as we um get more and more um relying on on technology to create efficiencies, we also have to have that support help uh to run that, and we need to start designing uh support to various departments because of the the immediate need of services. So this person, while we're reporting with according with RIS department, would be housed down at the shop facility, so that they're uh seamless service to our 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 employees down there. So in summary, with the with the nine additional employees for this year, that brings our total employee count up to three hundred and thirty-one for the organization. And again, uh eighty percent of our total employee count is housed in the general fund and twenty percent in our enterprise fund. As we've, you know, talked about that keeping pace with uh population growth, and and again, this is just a, you know, thumb stretch barmer of how our level of service aligns with that. But in terms of full-time employees per one thousand population, we increased slightly this year. But as you look at that line going back to two thousand and ten, we're having a um a challenge of trying to keep pace with with the growth of the community and the additional programs and uh and service needs that the community requires.
So is that three thirty-one um budgeted positions, or is that three thirty-one's like bombs and seats?
Those are budgeted positions.
So how many bomb, how many employees do we actually have?
That um so not counting the, there's nine, going back to the two uh the previous number of three hundred and twenty-two. It varies from month to month as as we do recruitments, but uh the last step that I had about three weeks ago is we have about two hundred and ninety uh employees in seats.
So, wow. So we're we're way under.
Yes.
As I recall, that we've been at.
That's right, at about ten percent, and as I recall, that's where we've been the last several years, right at about that ten percent.
Yeah.
And um and then again, you know, our biggest challenge, of course, is law enforcement recruitment because of the lead time for training, and that is a whole different uh challenging scenario. But if the rest of the organization, you know, that's not the same position being open. It's just a continual process, because people retire, people leave for other jobs, and we're constantly in that recruitment site. And so our HR team, um Leilani and her team do a great job of trying to maintain those recruitment services, employee benefits, and resources and support. But that's another indication too, is as we move forward and the organization grows, the 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 behind-the-curtain type of departments that provide that support also need to expand as well, and that's one of the challenges that we face.
And we know how difficult it is, like, for example, you know, Wade is gonna be Duffy is gonna be retiring here and and, you know, thirty day or sixty days, wherever it may may be. And it's like, we're not just losing him, losing him plus all those years, all those years and all, so you hire someone and they're like, it's gonna take them ten years to get them cleaner, closer to what Wade was be- what Wade was providing, so um there's that, there's that as well.
So going back to our our budgetary pressures, um this is a look at our our payroll from year to year, and that includes a breakout for benefits as well as salaries. And so for twenty twenty-four, in the general fund, our payroll is gonna be um just over thirty-nine million dollars. And that's about seven and uh seven point six percent increase from the previous year. And so when you look at that, you know, that's a roughly a two point eight million dollar increase, just keeping the status quo. And with our general fund tax revenue at coming in about three point three, you can kind of see that that it's fairly tight and trying to keep pace. Also, there's a big jump in that that salary, because there's a lot of factors that can go into it. One is the inflation that causes um the COLA and health benefits to increase. But also too, and 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 the mayor just alluded to it, is uh we've had a lot of turnover in our organization over the last three or four years. Um if some of you attended the employee breakfast that we had last year, that was the first one we had since prior to the pandemic, and I asked a question, how many in this room? Um this is their first breakfast, and almost at least the thir- uh over a third raised their hand. And when you have a lot of new people coming in, they're generally starting low, and so you're having step increases. And uh and so you see that turnover, and they're coming in, especially with new positions, you see that that um step increase that occurs along with those COLA increases. So there's a lot of factors that go into that increase uh in salaries. So next, uh after employees, I want to just kind of talk a little bit about some of the public enhancements that we have funded in the budget for this year. Um under the council party of uh collaborative planning, again, we're gonna be looking at the um commissioning a s- a study to analyze the cost benefit of potential annexation areas, primarily based on a House Bill of fourteen twenty-four, which uh provides a sales tax credit for annexation area. But we have to do a lot of some fiscal analysis of how those services were used and be able to exercise that legislation for vote value. So that was something that was uh done starting at the beginning of the year. We also um have have found that our Jacob Smith House and McKinney House actually aren't on our historic register.
What?
And so we're gonna be commissioning a study to have the documentation put together, make sure that it is recognized on our register, and I don't know if Jen would wanna add, you know, any insight.
The world is that are those two not on our historic register?
Yeah, so um uh so the McKinney House just recently is in the city boundary.
Yeah, I get that.
Um the Jacob Smith House, uh so as long as I've been here, which is almost seven years, uh and as long as Aaron, our museum curator, has been here, is ten years, we have thought that the Jacob Smith House is on the historic register.
There a plaque there?
Aaron cannot find any documentation that shows that it is actually on the historic register.
Uh so we have a plaque.
This was just a recent uh discovery in the last, I don't know, nine months or so. Uh we're baffled by that.
So fortunately, we discovered it, and we felt that we needed to make sure we preserve our historical assets. And uh so we're gonna commission a study to document it and prepare it, so it's gonna be placed on the historic register and and memorialized.
And the the Lake Lewis feasibility study, is that what we're gonna possibly do at the McKinney House?
Correct. That is uh taking a look at the McKinney House, looking at with, you know, having a feasibility study that looks at the environmental restrictions, what can be developed on there with and some upland area, and potentially set up a conceptual plan of how that can, that property can be utilized for the public.
Very cool.
Under environmental stewardship, of course, uh we're gonna continue with the PSC matching rebate program. There's about seventy thousand dollars that's been allocated for that interlocal or that agreement with PSC. And I'm losing track of time a little bit, but I think it's been operating for maybe over a month, month and a half. And um to date, I'm pleased to report that we've had uh issued uh just over nine thousand dollars in rebates to Lacy households to uh nine.
Nine thousand or ninety?
Nine.
Nine. And um and um there are nineteen households that received that with twenty-seven applications. And so we see some initial success, and again, it's thanks to uh Lindsay, our climate coordination, and also our public affairs team of getting the word out, but we're gonna continue to try to to get that word out, and if it is successful, we might be able to expand it to our commercial businesses. We're also gonna continue with the LED streetlight replacement program. This is something that the council initiated uh several years ago, I believe, I want to say eight years ago. And to continue to uh 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 fund two hundred thousand dollars a year to systematically replace all of our um LED streetlights as they burn out or are on schedule for for maintenance. And then, of course, I put in there electric vehicle charging stations. That's another such um initiative or implementation action that we um we incorporate with opportunistic, whether we see grants or pro- uh development project, like you saw earlier tonight with the Rack Parking Lot Award. We saw the opportunity to use some uh reserves to put in charging stations, so that's an opportunistic uh action that we'll continue to work on as we do projects. In terms of the Lacy Library, uh we are, we have uh found that our HVAC system in in the building is is quite old, and some of the parts and um supplies for that are starting to be um unavailable. And so before we are able to get parts, supplies, or uh or uh you know, resources for it, we're going to look at replacing that HVAC system to a modern, more modern uh equipment, and that's something that's easier to maintain and and yes, councilor Stever.
Is that equipment from nineteen ninety-one when they had the expansion, or the?
You know, I'd have to go back and check. I believe so.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure it's original.
As if so, I mean, nineteen ninety-one is over thirty years, so.
Some of the coolant that they have to use is is what's going to be discontinued. And if we don't have the coolant in it, then then it's gonna be more 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 problematic and more of a emergency. So we want to get ahead of the game and and improve that and look at what type of uh efficiencies we can gain out of this new new uh HVAC equipment. Back in the the police department, uh the one of the things that we're we're doing some uh programming is uh again, the the record management system replacement. And this is uh upgrading our our um our programs for for maintaining that uh police department records, but also, more importantly, it's a regional-based system that we're buying into, and uh this is a private opportunity to share data with our partners within the county as well as um have better communication as we uh work cases. Again, this is uh four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to onboard the system. Then also ongoing costs will be uh about a hundred and three thousand a year as proportionate on a via the per capita basis. And then also too, we're going to be looking at establishing a north uh substation for police uh activity or police uh services. We're looking at at least about forty-two hundred dollars per year, and this is gonna be similar to what we did down by um Horizon Point, where we have a place where officers don't have to come all the way into uh City Hall to the police station to fill out paperwork or or um and coordinate their work. They can have a place they can stop and stay out in the patrol area at a longer duration.
So have you found this substation already, or are you are you looking for it, waiting for it to be budgeted, and then you're gonna go look for it?
So currently, we're, excuse me, currently, we're using a space that's being um that's being provided to us at CAC, and we're gonna stay at that location. However, now there's a rent, because it's an enhanced space, and they're doing some remodeling. So it'll be more secure and better provided for the officer's needs. So there's an associated cost with that.
Oh, great. Thank you.
All right, and then next in program enhancements, I just wanted this, these these are familiar slides to the council, but I just wanted, you know, again, I mean, you know, I reiterate, we also maintain these normal services that we've done in the past with the neighborhood grant program. And as I've seen those come through for uh as uh Ginny Bashfield and our public affairs office has managed, they're they're quite useful, they're quite uh they're quite popular. HOAs are taking advantage of that and improving their neighborhoods. And again, that goes back to creating higher-quality neighborhoods, quality of life, and uh also uh community safety. Also, with that, uh which not to be shown on here, is we also are continuing contracts with the Economic Development Council for business support and and uh training services as well as Together Grub, and we're including the Dispute Resolution Center based on council action earlier this year. Whoops. And then, of course, we're um ah, hit the wrong button again. Uh continuing with funding of the uh Veteran Services Hub. And again, I just want to point out the value of this this hub and uh, you know, it's it's influencing the region. If you look at that, the client appointments in twenty twenty-two, seven, over seventeen thousand five hundred client appointments. And if you look at the number for the past two years, that's more than twenty-seven thousand, so exceeded twenty twenty-two uh or twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. I think also too, that's, you know, you're seeing the the dust of the pandemic setting off and people getting out more, but again, this is a key service that we provide to our region, and um and I know it's well-valued. Also, can't help but put a plug in that remind everybody that we have the the Mayor's Gala, Lacy Mayor's Gala tomorrow night at six o'clock, where we'll be the fundraiser for the Veteran Services Hub.
And I'll I'll put a quick plug in. This is actually a really good investment for our our community as well. Yes, there's a cost, but uh last year alone, the Lacy Veteran Services Hub um brought in about two and a half million dollars in back pay and and um and um assistance to veterans in Thurston County alone. And so uh directly tied to the Lacy Veteran Services Hub, so yeah, so yes, there's a cost, but uh they're actually putting dollars back into our community as well.
It's probably one of the most important and best things we've done, and I mean, I've been on council twelve years, Andy's had, I don't know, what, fourteen years or so? Probably, I would say, in the top one, two, three things we've done in in that entire time, so.
You know, I've always appreciated the council's full support on that, yeah.
All right, now we'll switch into our capital budget. And uh and again, this is where um we um see a large number in the capital budget, uh sixty-eight million dollars anticipated for this coming year. And the uh the first topic is, of course, our police station. And again, I mentioned earlier in my introduction that this is a a critical piece of a a critical need for our police department. It also, um again, it doesn't come, you know, you know, cheaply, it's sixty one and a half million dollars. However, um the um uh the city's able to fund that, and the council's able to fund that using just over forty-four million dollars in reserves, as well as uh seventeen million dollars in limited uh tax general obligation bonds, and using uh future REIT revenues to pay off those bonds. Uh what we'll see is uh we're currently out for advertisement for bids for the police. Uh, what we'll see is, uh, we're currently out for advertisement for bids for the police station. Hopefully, as we saw earlier tonight with the bid for the Rack parking lot, we're hoping that it would come under our estimate in the more favorable bidding climate. And then, uh, if there are bids acceptable and everything goes as planned, then we could be, uh, entering contract and even starting breaking ground sometime, you know, around January, February, the first of the year. Again, it could be open in twenty twenty-five. And again, this will be a state-of-the-art, uh, space for the police staff. It will also include a community space and training room that can also be repurposed for our EOC in, in the event of a response. And it also provides safe places for custom exchange and e-commerce. So there's a dual purpose with serving the public as well as serving the needs for our operations of our police department. Uh, this is our next project that we had a briefing to the council at the last work session on the timing, but the Gray Culeo Park. Uh, we are looking to continue, um, moving forward on that project and, uh, finishing up design in twenty, uh, twenty-four and looking to be able to got the bid in the second half of twenty twenty-four and move forward on Culeo Park. Also too, there's, um, you know, well, I mean, there's, uh, you know, again, this is a state-of-the-art art. I think the council is pretty well aware of it and, uh, it's, it's been a priority project of the council for some time. We also have some funding to replace, uh, the playground equipment at, uh, Bush Park down off of Yum Highway. This equipment is due for replacement. It's starting to get the wear and tear. And so that's a, a budget item of about four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And this is a good example of, um, how, um, we can't do it alone all the time. And we have great community organizations that are looking to give back to the community. And so in this particular case, we have a commitment letter from Gateway Rotary to, uh, they have raised a hundred and ten thousand dollars to go towards this project. And, um, and then also, um, once we get moving on it, we may have the opportunity to seek, uh, fu- grant funding from RCO grants to also buy down the cost. But again, we need to move forward on it this year to start replacing that, uh, that equipment for, for our neighborhoods down there. And again, that's the same thing that could happen with Culeo Park is we might see some local, um, uh, community service organizations start raising dollars to do, um, enhancements as well, um, there. Uh, I won't spend much time on this. You, uh, approved the, the word of the bid tonight for the Rack enhancements. That will be a despotant, uh, nice addition to the Rack and will, you know, it does get very busy. The parking lot gets full, especially for bus parking and RVs. And then as finally, I mentioned this earlier, the Transportation Benefit District, um, we're looking at having, uh, four point six million dollars in projects planned for, uh, twenty twenty-four with, uh, street overlay rehabilitation. And, um, you know, again, in addition to that four point six million, we're also going to be looking to spend a total of about five point three with five hundred thousand for sidewalk maintenance and another two hundred thousand dollars performing crack seal to extend the life of some of our, uh, pavements in our streets in the community. And then, uh, the last one I want to highlight specifically is the College Street Extension. This is a project that has been on the books for quite some time. We're still in the process to finalize in the last bit of right of way, but we are programming it to go out, uh, for construction, uh, in twenty twenty-four. And this is a connection that's been needed for, for many, many years, identified as a need. Uh, it will connect, um, College Street, uh, by Sixth Avenue Northeast, North to Fifteenth Avenue. And this will also help remedy the, the flow of traffic that goes through some of the neighborhoods out there that the council is very aware of. And I do want to throw out and thank Scott Eggers, Public Works Team, as well as Shannon's, uh, Public Affairs Team to help, working with those neighborhoods to find some temporary solutions until we can get this built. And hopefully those, uh, reduce the pressure on those streets. And of course, it's gotten, you know, more so over time with the growth that's been happening up in the northeast area, especially on Fifteenth Avenue that we just seen an increase in, in traffic coming down through that corridor. So this is a key project that will hopefully make a difference, uh, for the movement of, of vehicles out in that area.
And that's going to have like sidewalks, bike lanes and the whole full meal deal?
Yes. And, and it also, we just showed the, the connection from the existing pavement of, of, um, College and Sixth North. But it will also have improvements to Sixth Avenue all the way out to Slater Kenny as well as down to College Street with restriping and channelization. And, uh, I believe also, uh, some pavement as well. Uh, so it is something that will have to be a, a full, uh, multimodal corridor. And then, um, and finally, um, the, the other items we have on the, uh, capital projects in, in transportation include the Carpenter Road and Britton Parkway, College Street and Sixteenth Avenue Roundabout Right Of Way, the College Street and Twenty-Ninth Roundabout Right Of Way with some additional design. And then, um, I mentioned it earlier with the investments in Midtown, we're starting design of the College Street and Seventh Avenue Roundabout, about four hundred thousand dollars there. Uh, we're still working with, um, uh, MGR Development and St. Martin's Abbey on an agreement for the, the footprint of that. But we want to get started on, on, on design.
The Carpenter Road, Britton Parkway Roundabout, that's actually going to be built in twenty-four?
Yes. Yes. Now moving on to special revenue. Um, we have basically, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand, uh, dollars in our special revenue budget. It's made up of primarily two, uh, um, two funds. One is the Hicks, uh, Hicks Lake, um, uh, Management District. And, uh, this is a situation where the Hicks, uh, Hicks Lake Management District form with an effort to, uh, uh, protect and improve the water quality of the lake with certain enhancement projects. And they agree to, um, assess themselves, um, uh, and then collect that assessment to do those projects. We are acting as a fiduciary where we'll collect those funds and do the assessment for them. And then the, the, um, Lake Management Board, District Board will then identify projects, authorize those projects and authorize us to pay for those projects with, through that assessment that we collect. So it's a nice little feature for our community to be able to manage and, and improve, uh, water quality as well as the ambience of the lake.
Does that, does that forty-eight thousand include the, the additional assessments that will be collected by the, um, multifamily that's coming in there?
That's I have to, I don't think that's on the books yet because I think they have, because those haven't broken ground. And, uh, once they come on, online and have that increased value, that assessment will increase once they open up. The, um, next category, of course, is our, our lodging tax, uh, fund. And, uh, we have a, um, a lodging tax committee that, uh, uh, monitors those funds and awards those funds for, uh, programs that, uh, or for applications or community events that promote tourism as well as funding tourism-related facilities. Uh, it's made up of, um, uh, hoteliers as well as, uh, representative events. And then also our deputy mayor serves as a chair on the lodging tax, uh, but, uh, lodging tax committee. Uh, this year, the budget for the lodging tax is six hundred thousand dollars. Again, our assessment comes from hotels and motels, uh, total about seven that have about four, uh, five hundred and thirty-two rooms. And of course, that's a per-night, uh, tax, estate tax and at a rate of four percent. So this year, uh, in, in making the recommendation of the, we incorporate the recommendation of the, uh, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee into the budget. The six hundred thousand dollars will be going towards, uh, um, several projects ranging from capital projects of supporting activities at the Rack, which is one of the largest, uh, draws for the county. It's not, it's, it's the largest draw of the county for bringing people in for events. We also have support for the Washington Performing Arts Center as well as the Lacy Museum. And then a series of events that, uh, also the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has identified that bring people into the community or have multi-day events. And then, of course, uh, marketing, and you can see up there the breakdown of percentage of the total budget awarded to each one of those categories. Again, uh, with this year, they, they received about twenty-seven applications from a total of twenty-one organizations and awarded out six hundred thousand dollars in funds. So now we're going on to the enterprise funds of the water sewer and, uh, stormwater utilities. Twenty twenty-four, we're going to see a, a total budget of about a hundred and, just over a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. A lot of that is going on maintenance and operation as well as capital projects. Uh, just as a reminder for, for the community and the council, our utility funds are again made up of a water system, the sanitary sewer system as well as stormwater. Um, our water system made up of twenty wells and four hundred, uh, miles of water mains provides two point seven billion gallons of water annually to the community. And that's a, that's a big operation. Likewise, our, our, our wastewater system is made up of, uh, forty-eight sewer, sewer lift stations with over two hundred miles of sewer mains and, um, take away about one point five billion gallons of, of sewer annually. And then finally, our stormwater, um, which has over a hundred miles of stormwater pipe and forty-seven different stormwater facilities and, uh, fifty-two hundred catch basins. And so those systems have a lot of components to them and, um, and they, um, take a lot of, uh, uh, staff, high-quality staff, great staff to go out and maintain those facilities. So we'll jump into real quickly the, the, um, the water utility. And, uh, this is a slide that shows the, uh, current, uh, capital improvement program that's based off of the Water Conferenceee Plan. And over the, the, the six years from, uh, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven, there's about a hundred and thirty-six million dollars of improvements to the water system. For twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty, or twenty twenty-four, we're expecting to, uh, spend about thirty-eight million dollars in, um, capital doll, or, uh, capital projects. So again, with our water system plans, they always come with, uh, what are the needs to maintain and grow the system to meet with growth. They also take a financial plan. And in order to afford, um, this capital improvement program and continue to meet the, the needs of the community, there is also a rate structure. And, uh, since twenty twenty-three, that's identified a, um, a percentage increase to the rates of five point two five percent annually throughout. And this is what we'll be proposing to the council in the budget for this year. Um, and then we also will look at that longer term and that multi-year rate conversation. One other thing too, that, um, in the, uh, water utility is we're going to be incurring a little bit of debt. We got the opportunity to apply, apply for, um, uh, Public Works, uh, uh, trust, I'm going to use the old language. It's a different term now, Public Works Trust Board and, or Trust Fund. And that, what that does is provides from the state a low-interest loan for capital projects that we can take advantage of. And I mentioned earlier that we need to add, uh, two new PH treatment facilities out in our water system. And, um, we were able to secure a ten million dollar loan from, from the state, uh, less than two percent interest to be able to go towards the, the, those two projects. Uh, in wastewater, again, this is the wastewater capital improvement program. And over that same six-year period, we're looking at fifty-three million dollars investment, seventeen million of those in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, same thing with the water utility. We have a rate structure planned moving forward to meet that, those obligations. And, uh, in twenty twenty-four, we're looking at that same nine and a half percent increase that had been predicted, uh, with the water plan. Uh, this will raise the, uh, the lot char, Lacy and Lot Charges combined charge to about eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents a, a month, which is just, um, just a little bit around four dollars, um, a month.
How much of that is lot?
The, um, lot is about forty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. And, um, uh, Lacy's portion of that is thirty-two dollars and six cents. And the Lacy portion will be going up about two dollars and seventy-eight cents from the previous year. Um, and also too, with the wastewater, you know, we have a lot of projects planned. And, uh, if we are able to achieve all those projects this year and don't have any delays, we will look at, you know, going out for some revenue bonds, uh, in about, about five and a quarter million dollars to be able to achieve those projects. But that's dependent on construction schedules, you know, design and, um, and then, of course, the bidding climate. So this is an example or a bar chart comparing, um, this year's maintenance, maintenance and operation, capital and debt schedule for all three utilities to the previous year. And as you can see, see that by that chart, um, the water utility is, uh, you know, budget is about seventy-three million. And it has a substantial increase in, um, capital projects at, at just under thirty-nine million. And, um, and then, of course, uh, the, the identified debt associated with the wastewater is about, again, fifty-one million. And, um, the, uh, the biggest difference in that chart is, uh, issuing debt. And then a stormwater, uh, utility is staying fairly consistent and, uh, is looking at a ten million dollar, uh, budget for this year. Or is twenty twenty-four. And again, this is looking at overall utility rates in the city of Lacy compared to last year. And, um, as you can see on the left-hand column, you have twenty twenty-three at, uh, a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents for stormwater, lot wastewater, city Lacy wastewater and city Lacy water, uh, for, per household. Uh, it's based on seven hundred cubic feet of water, which is a, um, the, the benchmark consumption level for residential. You see that increasing to a hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-one cents for twenty twenty-four. So now we'll move on. What's all that, what's going to be specified in those capital improvement projects? We'll move on to some of those utility improvements. I mentioned a couple of times, this is the, uh, uh, PH treatment facilities out at the Majona Will Site as well as West Side Will. Combined, it's going to be about fourteen and a half million dollars. And again, this is to, uh, uh, treat the alkalinity in, into the water to get it to, uh, a neutral basis to meet state standards. Also of note this year is we'll be moving forward with the Tomy Park, uh, uh, Utility Local Improvement District. This is a three million dollar project. The district was formed in the, in the, in the previous years or two years ago. And now we're ready to move forward with design for a septic conversion project in that area.
When do we plan on annexing them into the city of Lacy?
Well, that's also going to be part of that annexation strategy we look at and, and how we do that and take the benefit of House Bill fourteen, uh, fifty-four. But that is one of the things that we looked at in that, in that study. And then, of course, uh, those were the two highlighted projects, but we have a whole list of, uh, projects in the, in, in the utility funds that, um, um, total about another sixteen point four million dollars. That includes finishing up the, uh, continue to work on the Terry Cargo Reservoir out at Corporate Center Drive and, and Telco Loop, College Street Extension of Water and, uh, several lift station replacements and, uh, and, and improving some stormwater lines. The other thing I just want to mention too is it also includes, uh, water main in College Street. We took the opportunity with the College Street Extinction Project to save a little dollars in combined projects and, uh, make sure we have a good, uh, looping of our water main system. Constantly looking at making sure we maintain pressure and water flow for, for fire. Now here's a little bit of, of some, a good news for us in terms of debt. This, uh, twenty twenty-four, we're looking at a total of about a mil, just over a million dollars of, of debt service for twenty twenty-four. This, this slide just kind of articulates, uh, where we are in terms of, um, city issued debt down at the right-hand corner of the blue shade at ten million dollars. And the outline of the blue shade going up to the top right, it shows what is the, um, statutory limit of debt we can impose. Now, as I was talking to, uh, our finance director, he said, well, seven and a half percent, that's a lot. And how do you, do they take that on? Well, there's other safeguards too in terms of debt limit. So each one of the utilities has a two and a half percent limit. So you probably exceed one of those before you receive the full statutory seven and a half percent. But this is also just to articulate that we have capacity to look at this as potential strategic investments going forward. And also too, we've been very, uh, conscious of, of how we have spent debt and buying it down. And we're actually going to have some debt come off the books come in twenty twenty-four, which is helpful to our taxpayers.
Can you go back one slide real quick?
Yes.
Can you go back one slide? So the, the nine forty is seven and a half percent of our assessed value?
Yes, I'm sorry.
To understand, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, that is seven and a half percent of our total assessed value.
Currently, we are at ten, three of that nine forty.
Well, and, uh, and actually, uh, uh, our assessed value is increasing. It's actually, uh, that, that, that shows our, our, uh, the maximum we can borrow. But our, uh, our assessed value going into twenty twenty-four is that twelve point one billion dollar number. So this is, this is some exciting news. So, uh, we've issued two voter-approved, uh, uh, bonds over the past, uh, uh, ten years for parks, parks improvements. And the twenty twelve, uh, uh, unlimited tax general obligation bond has been paid in full this year. So that will, uh, go off the books. So we have one remaining voter-approved bond that will be part of the property tax assessment. And, uh, the, uh, table to the right shows what the outstanding balance is, a million dollars, that the annual payment will be. And we're looking at what, what are the excess levy rate that, to pay that off? And we're looking to pay that off at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-six in December. So that's another voter-approved. So that's another voter-approved bond that will go off the books.
Actually, in two thousand twelve and two thousand fifteen, we, we refinanced those. We didn't issue them for the first time. We refinanced those in two thousand twelve and two thousand fifteen.
Thank you for that clarification, because these are, again, parks improvements that came from the early two thousands, included Ranger Vista Park and several other parks improvements throughout the community. So thank you for that clarification. And then this table shows all of our different debt obligations out there. So we have five different, starting from top to bottom. We have some revenue bonds for water and stormwater. The revenue bonds for the LID that I just, for, for an LID twenty-four. And then, of course, it shows the twenty twelve refinancing bond going off the books. And then our twenty fifteen I just mentioned. And then, of course, the twenty fifteen limited-term bonds for the RAC phase two, and that's funded out of the PFD district. And so all in all, our total annual payment is about one point six million dollars on that debt. And, and our balance, total bond balance is that ten point three million dollar number.
Just for clarification, can you explain why a couple of them stay refunded?
I'm gonna turn over to our finance director, Troy.
That is the term we use for refinance. So as, as the mayor stated, we have gone through the process and evaluating when it makes sense to refinance those bonds. So when you see refunded, that means we have indeed refinanced those at a lower rate and thus saved the taxpayers' interest.
So internal services funds. So this is the, about eight, just over eight million dollars in budget. This is the fund that we use to replace our, or have our annual, our equipment rental fund, where we, you know, charge ourselves the amount to replace vehicles when they become ready to replace. And, and this year, this is the breakout of those funds. We're gonna spend about four point five million dollars on maintaining and replacing our, our vehicles and our city fleet. And then another three and a half million dollars for all the computers still found, iPads, all the technology, the technology equipment. For our vehicle replacement, this is our, basically our shopping list. And this is the, the equipment we're going to be going out and replacing this year at a total price tag of about two point three million dollars. We have the Vactor Tractor I mentioned earlier. Again, that's about just over seven hundred thousand dollar purchase, all the way down to the Capoto RT at the RAC. And then, of course, we're going to include four police replacement vehicles and several shop maintenance vehicles in that, in that purchase.
Do we actually think we'll get any of them in, in that, in twenty twenty-four? I know we're gonna order them, but will we actually get it?
Brian Gugelmans down to shop, our head mechanic, he's, he's confident that, you know, the electric vehicles are another thing, but also, too, that's given us time to also plan out for electric vehicle purchases. I forgot to mention this earlier in our climate action, but to plan out how we set up the infrastructure to support those as well. So, but he's, he's constantly working on this and keeping Troy and I informed, so.
What's up with a couple of Chevys in there? Why don't we just stick with Ford? Just kidding.
There's a change. We're, we're doing a side-by-side comparison, it's kind of like the old taste test.
Okay.
So now it comes down to this last little stretch, the value proposition. And this is something, too, that I think is important for the community as well as council and, and staff to know. So this is a kind of how we're looking at in terms of, of property taxes compared to other bills that the, you know, people in the public may have. And this is kind of those exercises. So currently, with the twenty twenty-four property tax estimate based on a five hundred thousand dollar home, again, we have the median sale price I mentioned very at the beginning of the presentation, comes out to about three hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents in city property tax. Compare that to some, an average cell phone bill of two thousand a year, or average car payment or cable bill, and, you know, that cost of a new iPhone. Now, I tried to replace that, but there was some type of password select on that that couldn't change the iPhone reference. Next, you know, kind of how that property tax is collected, because, you know, there is a big property tax bill that goes out to a property owner. And this slide is a really good slide that shows that out of the total property tax collection, only about eight percent of that comes to the city. And so that's, you think about the services the city provides from street maintenance, the, the police patrol and, and public safety, to all the general government services, there is quite a big value there to the, to the community. And of course, as you see, school districts at four percent, the state at twenty-four percent, all for schools. So that's quite a big for schools, on down to our, some of our junior taxing districts.
The state's piece is all for schools as well?
I believe so, yep.
A large part of it's for schools.
Large part of it. And then, side-by, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four comparison. So in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, with the average home price of five hundred and twenty-five, or value of five twenty-five, again, I mentioned that the assessed values came down from previous year to this year. Came out with the regular levy tax rate and excess rates down to a property tax bill for the city at three hundred and eighty-four dollars. And you look over to twenty twenty-four with the decrease in evaluation, and the big difference is part of that voter-approved bond excess levy came off with the twenty twenty-twelve refinance bill, comes down to three hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents, so ten dollars less than what that home may have paid last year. But there's a lot of factors to go into that as well. And of course, it's in the property tax, so it may not be as noticeable with all the other pieces of that property tax bill.
So Troy, when do you think we're gonna, how comfortable are you with that point, you know, that levy rate right now? Obviously, we, we're still waiting for assessed value to totally come in. We have our, our, you know, there's several factors that, that, that play into this rate. I'm, I'm surprised it's, I mean, I, I know there's, we're seeing property, you know, the levy or property rates, that values go down, and that's a big deal. But we've also, just think about how much we've added here in Lacy. I mean, we've, we're just, we're out on the, you know, on the tour not too long ago, we're seeing all this new construction, all that, that's a considerable addition to our, to our levy, you know, our, what's going on the rolls. So do you think it's really gonna go to point seven-one?
Well, there's a hundred percent chance I'm wrong. So I'll start with that. But I think the change is gonna be very minor. So what is not in this number is the refund levy.
Refund levy.
So that, I actually have that number, but we didn't have that in the budget. That refund levy is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that's gonna be added, which means the rate will go up slightly due to that fact.
Sure.
We will probably get two or three more changes to the new construction number before the council actually adopts the rates or the levy itself. But that number typically doesn't move a whole lot. So we're adding about a hundred and eighty million this year. And like I said, I don't expect that to change too much, but it will definitely change. And that will, depending if it goes up or down, will impact that number. But I think that's gonna be very close. It might actually get closer to seventy-two cents per thousand or maybe a little bit higher.
Okay. I guess we'll, I guess we'll see.
And then one last slide is a comparison from twenty twenty-three budget to current twenty twenty-four budget with the change in property tax as well as the utility rates, even if the increase of utility rates in twenty twenty-four, but the reduction in that property tax, you're at, you know, five dollars and eighty-seven cents less. However, again, like I said earlier, property tax is collected differently. People won't see that, and they will also see what, what their utility bills on a monthly basis. So I just want to put that caveat in there, but this is just a general comparison for sort of city services overall. So next, public participation. This is the final corner of the, of the lap of the budget process. And so next, we'll start going into some scheduled public hearings. So we're gonna have a series of three public hearings coming up in November and December. The first being November second, we're planning on having a hearing on revenue sources. This is going to be looking at the all tax revenue sources, but also specifically on the exercise of the one percent option on the property tax as well as the utility rates. Then on the sixteenth, we have scheduled for the first of the two required hearings on the budget. These would be opportunities for the community to come in and provide comments or requests to the council. And then after the second hearing on December seventh, the council will be queued up to adopt the final budget on December twenty-first. And again, this is a lot of information, and the budget document is very dick, very thick, but it is available online at the web address on the screen, as also by that QR code, or they can contact the city of Lacy, and we'll be able to direct them to how they can find access to the budget. Again, this is a, been a very good year in terms of moving forward on, despite all the transitions and the, the experience that the city has faced. And we're pleased to present to the council a proposed balanced budget for twenty twenty-four. And again, I want to thank all the director staff for all their diligence and work in preparing this budget and their requests. Troy and Christian Chelsea and his unfinanced team of putting together all the nuts and bolts and numbers. Shannon's Public Affairs Team, Donna and John and everybody that put together the, this presentation and the graphics and everything. And again, the entire organization for their diligence in providing key services to the community with the, the public accountability in mind. So with that, I hand the budget off to the council and be happy to respond to any questions as well as our, our director team over on the other side of the room.
Any questions? Well, first of all, I just want, good job, Rick. Obviously, this.
First budget.
Yeah. I mean, we know how, how, you know, how hard this is, and, you know, you're sort of obviously thrown into the fire on this one. And I, I can appreciate how difficult it is to take in your first budget, especially when all the needs of a growing community. I, I, I know, you know, it's, it's so hard because I, I realize your requests, you know, have come in from all the directors, and we only have so much money, and you have to make some really hard decisions. And I just, you know, appreciate you, you know, your, your first budget here. It looks like a great budget. I'm, I'm proud of it, and I think this whole council should be proud of it, too. So congratulations on that.
Again, it's the team effort, which is the Lacy way.
I do, I do want to give a heads up to the public and to this council. We, Thursday's gonna be, this, November is gonna be a busy November. Yeah, there's two council meetings in here, and I, I know that, that November sixteenth, we have a couple of council members that are gonna be out of town. Deputy mayor's gonna be out of town, and Councilmember Stedman's gonna be out of town. I'm also gonna be out of town all of November.
So am I.
And, yeah, and Robin's gonna be out as well. So the quorum's gonna exist because I think you guys are gonna, you guys are gonna try to come in remotely.
I'll be remote.
But my recommendation is that, that Lenny actually runs the meeting here.
Here in the room.
Even though you guys are remotely, but Lenny runs that meeting because it's just, it makes more sense to do that. That's on that November sixteenth. I'm also gone on November second. I'm, I'm gonna be gone for a couple of weeks in November.
I will not be gone.
So you'll be here from November second. Okay, so November second, that mayor, you got November sixteenth. Lenny's, Lenny's gonna be running the meeting, and you guys need to make sure you guys at least have a quorum, because we have to get through that, that budget hearing. And so I know it's tough, you're gonna be on the east coast, but we really need you here for, for the quorum for that.
I'll be here.
And are you okay with running the meeting there, Lenny? Okay.
Thanks, Mayor Vasquez.
Councilmember Vasquez? Uh-oh.
We got, we got nothing.
You not in your meetings?
No.
Well, I will be in India, so I will not be at the council meeting.
Okay.
India.
So India, but there'll still be a quorum.
We have to actually take action, though, I think, at that meeting to make, to nominate a chair, I think, is how we have to, that's what was done in the past.
Sure, sure. At, at that meeting, I, I do recommend, yeah, there'll be a motion to nominate you the chair of the meeting. So that, that's my recommendation, at least. Okay. With that, is there any other questions from this council? I, I see that we've, we've hit what I call the witching hour. We've here, been here for two and a, two and a half hours. Is there any reports that you feel like you have to give tonight, or can we push off reports till another time?
Do not have to.
Okay. Well, with that, I say that we push off our reports to another time, which means that we've reached the end of our agenda. Thank you. Good job, Rick, on your first budget presentation. Without objection, I will call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacy, and I'll see the public in December.
Tomorrow.
Keep it classy.